Okay. Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, November 27th, 2018 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Dempsey and trustee Heitman are excused for this evening's meeting. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Clerk Forva here. Trustee Kirmey.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by trustee Kirmey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Next, well, before we approve the agenda tonight, you know we've had issues with the sound system and the video system at our meetings. Since our last meeting, we did install some new equipment. This is the first time we're going to be using it tonight. You won't see anything different here in this room, but you may see some changes at home. The thing that we're hoping for the most is a steady, consistent signal so that people watching at home won't be interrupted and that we have a good, clean copy for rebroadcast. So just a fair warning that this is, tonight's meeting is a little experimental with the new equipment. Moving on to item C, approval of agenda. Any comments or questions? I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, November 27th, 2018.
Motion's been made by clerk Forva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by treasurer Clinton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is item D, approval of consent agenda.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda for Tuesday, November, excuse me, 27th, 2018.
Okay. Motion's been made by clerk Forva. Are there any, any, second or questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the police fire report, the summary where we have the transports billed out and now we have the new document, which I found out is, was just missing all along, the charge summary, which doesn't have a page number. Is the charge summary page generated as a report from a software that we have or is it handmade?
It is handmade by the company we currently use. They have three documents, a aging summary, a credit summary, and a charge summary that they deliver to us. They, they hand cut this one up and printed on one sheet of paper, the summaries, because the forms that come in have protected health data on them and we can't publicly distribute. I've had this in my files and approved this for board meetings since March of this year, but it had been removed prior to going into the board packet since then. We have corrected that issue and you should be seeing this every month as these three summaries. This is the report we get from our current vendor, MHR Billing, for our cost recovery.
When you say current, are you planning to change?
Cost recovery and transporting.
Are you planning a change?
I am looking at options.
That's the Lansing-based company?
Yes, yes. Right now, they are upping our rates and they have a contract they would like us to sign. I am looking at other vendors to see if we can get better rates or better reporting.
And who's helping you with that in the township?
I'm doing it myself.
Cindy's not, you may want to consult Cindy because it's a collection accounting-related thing.
I've talked to Cindy about it, but I will talk to her further.
So I noticed the numbers tie out exactly to the three numbers, which is good. May we have something for the emergency recovery, just start tracking it? And hazmat, you have two more components.
I have contacted the company to see if they can add that. Getting this was very difficult, which is one of our issues with our current company is their reporting to us is, needs some improvement, would be the best way to say it. There is another vendor out there that has a much better reporting component.
Now hazmat, we invoice ourselves, correct?
We invoice hazmat, our, no, we do not invoice hazmat ourselves. They go, that goes through MHR Billing as well. Most of the time, we call out the West Rowan hazmat team, which we are a part of with the West Rowan Township Association. They bill out and their charges are a lot more than us and a lot of times, because we are responsible for that payment to the West Rowan Townships if the spiller does not pay it. So a lot of times, we will negotiate to have that bill paid because it's considerably higher than what we would bill.
So who has the responsibility to make sure hazmat is collected?
That would be me, through MHR Billing.
All right. So I'd like to see something. And then who has the responsibility that, for emergency recovery? Remember, the winter tends to have more of that, right?
It tends to have more, yes. That's myself as well. And we're trying to get a, if you look under credit summary, I would like to have that broken out differently than what it's broken out now because we can, we can, we know what we charge for motor vehicle accidents. We know what we charge for hazmat accidents. We don't know with this report what we collect unless we go in by hand and start doing it, which right now I've done and it's a little over $6,000 for motor vehicle accidents only.
All right. One other suggestion is.
It is.
Manually number the pages so we can talk about them if we ever have to. I realize because it's a, it's a combined report, multiple reports, if you put manual page numbers at the top, then we could refer to it easier.
I can, I can do that.
Versus saying the page that has, you know, charge report in the upper right-hand corner or something like that. So it's just a ease of communication.
Okay.
All right.
There is still, I still need a second for this.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by clerk Forva, seconded by trustee Kirmey. Hearing no further questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is item E, public comments and questions, limited to three minutes. Just as a reminder, this is not your only opportunity during the evening to comment. We will have another public comment question time at the end of the meeting and we do encourage questions on individual agenda items as long as they are germane to that particular topic on the agenda. So at this point, are there any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, we're going to move on to item F1, new business. This is the proposed regional water purchasing plan through the Western Township's Utilities Authority. I think my cover memo pretty much explains the situation in detail. Basically, we're being asked to join a water purchasing consortium with Northville Township and Canton Township through the Western Township's Utilities Authority. A lot of people always associate WATUAA with sewers, but it is actually organized under a state law that allows for public utilities to be created for a variety of purposes, even things like trash collection or, in this case, water purchasing. This has been done in South Oakland County for many years with the SACRA system and a similar system is being proposed by Canton and Northville Townships right now. So Aaron Sprague is here tonight. He's the executive director of WATUAA. He is, I don't think he's here to advocate one way or the other, but just to lay out the, the proposed concept and take any questions that you might have. And then we'll have Pat Felrath come up and share some of his concerns and questions about, about the system as well. But Aaron, our job is not to put you on the spot tonight or to play good cop, bad cop. We're just asking for your insight on the history behind this and what your, what your thoughts might be.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll give you a brief background of how we got to looking at this. A number of years ago, Northville and Canton Townships requested through WTWA, the OHM, do a feasibility study to look into the, whether or not there were savings to be had by combining our purchasing of water from, at the time, DWSD, now GLWA. OHM performed that study. It was a pretty rudimentary study, but it indicated that there was potential savings for Northville and Canton Township to pursue it further. About a year ago, WTWA, again at the request of Northville and Canton Townships, hired OHM again to update that study, refine it further, and also have an optional addendum, so to speak, of adding Plymouth Township to the mix as well. That study was completed this spring and it indicated that there's a fairly nominal savings potential for Northville and Canton Township and a much more significant savings potential for the three townships combined. GLWA has indicated that they would not be opposed to this. They obviously wouldn't love it, but they would not be opposed to it. They've allowed other communities to do this. I'd like to briefly explain why it would work. As far as the, the rates that communities are charged is, are, charged is concerned, there are four factors really. One is distance from the water plant because it costs more to pump farther. One is elevation of the community because a pump, costs more to pump higher. The reality is communities can't do anything about distance or elevation. You're, you're stuck with what it is. So the, the remaining two factors are really what communities target in order to attempt to lower rates. And that's max day, which is the highest demand that your community has in any 24-hour period, and peak hour, which is your highest demand for a, for an hour-long period. The peak hour has an exemption period. So between midnight and 6:00 AM, the, you, you could pump, pump until you fill everything to the rim and it's not counted as a peak hour. It's only but outside of that 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM range. So it is possible for a community in the rate formula to have a peak hour that is equal to its max day demand. And that's what Plymouth Township currently does, is they fill their tank in the exclusionary period, taking more than their maximum day demand to make sure that their tank is full for the non-exclusionary period. So as such, Plymouth Township is what is called a peak hour or a max, it equals max day customer, a max day customer. Your peak hour in your contract is equal to your max day. Plymouth, or sorry, Canton and Northville Townships are not max day customers. They're close, but they're not quite max day customers. So getting back to how this could help, really, there are two ways that purchasing water as one entity rather than three could affect the rate. One is non-concurrent peaks. There's the potential that every community's actual demands are different, hour to hour, day to day. So there's the potential that when Plymouth Township's max day or high hour during a day is occurring, it's not the same time that Canton Townships or Northville Townships is occurring. So the max day and peak hour are not necessarily additive when you take a, a larger entity. The bigger factor is the peak hour. And peak hour really is why communities, A, not the, but a primary reason why communities consider building storage, elevated or ground level storage tanks. All three communities do have storage. Canton Township just installed their storage about a year and a half ago. It's been online for about a year and a half. It does not service their entire community. It only services a portion. And that's why Canton Township is not a max day customer. They have a, a portion of the township that is not controlled by the tank. Similarly, for Northville Township, they have elevated storage, but it doesn't control the demand for the entire township. It's only a portion of the township.
They have one tank?
I believe they have one. They may have two.
I, I think they just have the one.
I think they have one.
I think it's one and it's the one across from the Home Depot.
They're, they're considering addition of another tank, but.
Isn't there one like seven mile or something?
I don't know. I don't think so.
The psychiatric hospital may have had one at one time.
And then Canton has two.
They, they just installed, no, they have one.
They have one.
It's a ground level storage tank.
Right.
Rather than an elevated storage tank.
Aaron, could you explain one more time what a max day, the definition of a max day?
Your max day is the, the highest quantity of water that you buy during a one-day period.
24 hours.
24 hours. So in Plymouth Township's case, that's 10 million gallons per day. And because of your elevated storage, your peak hour is equal to that 10 million gallons per day. What, what the township is able to do is reduce its demand that it's actually taking from GLWA during those high use periods by draining the tank and then filling the tank in the exclusionary period to make sure that there's enough water present.
So it shaves off the peak hour, is that right?
It shaves off what GLWA sees as the peak hour. It doesn't affect what your residents are actually utilizing. It just affects what GLWA sees you utilizing.
We, we can't control the peak day. The GLWA is saying this is the peak day.
The, the, one of the difficulties in, for communities in, in trying to control the max day and the peak hour is that it's not necessarily the actual peak hour that Plymouth Township has. It, it coincides with the system peak hour and they look at what your demand at that point in time was. So it, it gets a little tricky to, to effectively targeted control that. So what communities have to do is essentially assume that it's always the day. And Patrick would be able to address that better than I since I don't currently run a water system. But your, your safest case is to assume that any day could be the peak hour, the max day day, and operate your system accordingly. The reality is you wouldn't need to, but that's the, the safest way to do it.
So that's the risk when they set the rates is that the risk that we would undertake would be that we could be, we could be charged rates from a calculus that is based on a different peak hour than what we have been.
The, the, there are a couple of risks, I guess. The, the, the primary risk, I believe, is that each, each community projects what its peak demand will be based on a certain amount of pumping from the GLWA plant. That projection is not a guarantee that that's what your demand will be on that day and that time. So typically, what's done is the community's demands are projected and one standard deviation either way is provided as well. And the community works with GLWA to determine what their actual number is. That's a negotiation that occurs. It's typically greater than that projection, somewhere within the one standard deviation.
But, but under a, a group purchasing or consolidated purchasing, there would be one calculation that would apply to all communities, right?
Correct.
So here's something I don't, I don't get. So, so you and I buy water from the same source.
Yes.
And we only have one source we can buy water from.
Yes.
Why would that source give us a discount if we decide to go in together?
The, the primary reason is that by going together, we can reduce our aggregate max day and our aggregate peak hour. That, that's the primary driving force behind the reduction.
That's what's in it for, for WATUAA.
There's not, what's in it for us is more work.
I'm after the grid authority.
Right. That's what's in it for the communities potentially is an overall reduction in the max day for the three communities and the peak hour. The reason there's, that there is a significant discrepancy between the savings for Plymouth Township, Canton Township and Northville Township alone and Plymouth Township added to the mix. And the primary reason is, again, Plymouth Township is a max day customer. Plymouth, the Canton and Northville Townships are not max day customers. However, what the study showed is that Plymouth Township has adequate capacity to actually reduce its peak hour below its max day. Now, contractually, there's no benefit to Plymouth Township to reducing the peak hour below the max day. Contractually, GLWA does not let you do that. If your max day is 10, even if your actual peak hour was eight, you're still paying for 10. By going in as a group, Plymouth Township can get credit for a reduction below its max day because it's offsetting the slight excesses in Plymouth, in Northville and Canton Townships. So that's really where the, the, the potential savings lies is, again, there, there, there's no reason financially for Plymouth Township currently to operate that way. There would be added cost, there would be added use of equipment. Wouldn't be responsible for Patrick or your operators to operate the system that way as it stands today. But if you were to join into an authority, then you could receive that benefit of reducing your peak hour below your max day effectively.
So one of the things that's been proposed by the other two townships is that a study be done. And I believe that OHM, who is also their township engineers, has done a study for them, but no one's done a study for us. So I suggested that we have HRC do a study because they're more familiar with our system. And I think they, they quoted, I think, 32 grand or something to do that study. Now, when I got that, that quote from HRC, I said, I really don't know if I want to spend that kind of money for something that may end up proving to be futile. So I went back to the chairman of WATUAA, who is Bob Nix, supervisor Nix, and I said, you know, if you guys want to do the study, or if you want to pay HRC, if WATUAA wants to pay HRC, then, you know, we can do the study. And the response was, well, we could have OHM do the study for you guys in Plymouth Township. And he told me as of yesterday morning that, that WATUAA would pay for it.
I, I, I guess what I'll say is when OHM prepared the report that identified the potential savings and, and the, the potential savings identified are, are fairly significant. We're up to about a million and a half per year for the three communities, so it's not, it's not insignificant. Patrick raised some concerns about the impact on the Plymouth Township's water system, rightly so. The, the reality is OHM has done the modeling for Northville Township. They have a, a very good understanding of the Northville Township water system. They have done a model of the Canton Township water system. They have a very good understanding of the Canton Township water system, what it can and can't do. They don't have that understanding for Plymouth Township. So after, after the report was presented to WTWA and the three communities, we had some action items for OHM to meet further with Plymouth Township staff, primarily Patrick, to get a better handle on the Plymouth Township system and what the impact, if any, would be on the Plymouth Township system. After that meeting, I think it was determined that really for OHM to have the, the same level of understanding of the Plymouth Township's system, I keep trying to say sewer for some reason, the, the Plymouth Township system, that Patrick wanted to have a, an analysis of your system done so we could get a better handle on what, if any, impact there would be on your users, on your pressure, on what the actual storage volume remaining on that peak day would be, increased costs, that type of thing. HRC prepared a proposal for Patrick. Supervisor Heisey approached WTWA to inquire as to WTWA's willingness to pay for that study. What WTWA indicated was that there was potential that we would be willing to, but we were interested in having another price proposal. I requested that proposal from OHM. One thing to keep in mind, that the, the OHM price is lower, but it also is lower in scope. A fair amount of the, the, not a fair amount, but there was some scope in the HRC proposal that was really kind of a peer review of the OHM study from Plymouth Township's perspective. And that's, I guess, from my perspective, that's not something that WTWA is really looking to share in the cost of. We're, we're, we're willing to share in the cost of getting a handle on the impacts of your system, but the, that sort of peer review, I think, is something that's.
How much was OHM's proposal?
19,000.
Okay.
And.
Well, I'm wondering if WATUAA would, would pay that much? We could go with HRC. You guys pay 16,000 or 19,000?
I, I think one of the other factors, and I, I won't speak for my board, but one of the other factors that I would consider is that that 19,000 includes an update to the study that OHM has already performed as far as the savings are concerned. If HRC is to do the work.
Got it.
We'll still have to go back to OHM and have, pay them something to do that portion of the work. I, I.
Well, we could have, we could have OHM do the study at WATUAA's expense and then we could have it, you know, we could certainly have, HRC's going to, going to look it over, that's for sure. I mean, it is still a study, so.
Right.
I, I just don't want to give anybody the impression that whether we do the study or you do the study, that we are committing to this.
No.
Because I, I, I know that Northville's water rates have been going up considerably over the last couple of years. And Canton this year, I think, was flat, as were we, but their rates have also continued to go up. And my, my non-engineering head says that my system's pretty good and the other two guys maybe don't have as good a system. And whether it's, you know, we can talk about peak hours and days all, all we want, but it's almost, sounds like I'm being taken advantage of, that my system's better than theirs and they know it. So they want to, by blending all three, they benefit from the advantages that are in my system.
I, I think it's fair to say that your system is more capable of handling its higher demands than the other two are. You, you have adequate storage to not only become a max day customer, but go beyond where there reward, where there benefit for going beyond.
So.
So really, what this would entail is the potential for additional savings because of that window or not.
Yeah. So, so for example, I mean, if, if Northville were to build another tower and improve their numbers, this might sound better, but it just seems like people are eyeing our towers and our, our capabilities possibly for a more of a regional advantage.
But Plymouth Township also will have an advantage. Is Patrick going to talk to us about, yep, some technical?
Sure, he is. Yep.
Right. I, I, I think really the, I guess from my perspective, and to be honest, it's more work for us to do this, but what, the reason we're interested, I'm interested in pursuing it is it, it is a potential savings. And I, I think you are correct in stating that the, the other two communities would be receiving the benefit of your excess, I guess the, excess storage. But the reality is that without those other two communities, you can't receive the benefit of that excess storage.
What, Bob, I think what you were getting to, it seems like whatever savings we would get out of the system, let's say it's a million dollars per community, $3 million of savings. That means GLWA is losing $3 million of revenue. They're going to have to make that up someplace.
Yes.
So the next year, they're going to raise our rates, $3 million. So this, the savings, whatever we get, are going to be short-lived because they, they just, they have to cover their costs. And if they reduce the revenue, they're going to have to raise it someplace else.
The revenue requirement is fixed. The, the community, the, the reality is that the community's allocation would go down by whatever percentage it goes down. And that revenue requirement would be spread among all of the GLWA customers, including the three townships. So obviously, the goal is that that savings outweighs the nominal increase. Now, there are well over 100 other communities that these revenues would be spread across, so certainly, we're talking about a savings level that is adequate to cover that subsequent increase. But, but you are correct. With water and sewer systems, they're nonprofit organizations. They're not making any money. There's a fixed revenue requirement. This may have a very nominal impact on the revenue requirement because, again, the reality is we actually will be drawing less from GLWA because we'll use, utilize the Plymouth Township storage more. It's not a, it's not a significant cost impact. So what it would represent is spreading that, whatever revenue, we're no longer paying to GLWA, to all of the other customers. And, and we have, our communities have been subject to that in the past. When, when the NACWA was formed and when the SACWA was formed, those revenue decreases in revenue received from those authorities impacted the rates of all of the other users.
Have you had this type of board-level discussion with the other two townships?
No. I. No. What I can tell you is that both Northville Township and Canton Township are interested in pursuing this, even with the nominal savings, whether or not Plymouth Township participates. We're talking about less than 1% savings without Plymouth Township, but they're still interested in pursuing it. So I do believe that Wtua will be purchasing water as an authority within some short period of time. The question really is whether or not Plymouth Township is a participant in that.
So our non-participation does not kill this project?
No, I don't believe so.
Any other questions for Aaron? Please stick around, and then we'll have Pat come up and give us his thoughts on this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'm not a fan of this proposal, and let me, I'll explain to you why. But let's start off, I just want to provide some background in our wholesale water rates. Right now, as Aaron pointed out, we're a max-day customer. That means we achieved the greatest amount of financial savings available to us from GLWA under their current methodology. Out of their eighty-nine customers, wholesale customers, there's only nine communities that are max-day customers, and we're one of them. So relatively speaking, our wholesale water rate, if you compare it to the neighboring communities, is very good. And I think the treasurer can attest to that. And it's very good because we, if you recall, ten years ago, I know a couple of you were around at the time, we had to invest in a pump booster station, and we had to spend three-quarters of a million dollars to become a max-day customer. And that lowered our rate forty percent. So as Aaron pointed out, that's because we can reduce our peak hour right now to match our max-day level. That's the best you can do under their current methodology, which, by the way, we had our re-opener this year with GLWA. We signed off on it, and they alluded to the fact that this methodology may change in two or three years. They're already looking at the methodology change on the wastewater side.
Is that because it's too favorable to Plymouth Township?
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of protest with this use of the peak hour, because the peak hour is really what drives the rates. If you exceed your peak hour, then your rates shoot up the window, shoot up the ceiling, I'm sorry. And we went through that, remember?
Yeah, it happened during the reconstruction of M-14.
So, now, and I just wrote down some things. So, you know, right now, we're, I think, we got a good wholesale water rate. We're doing great as a max-day customer. Now, I hope to continue to maintain our max-day customer status, but I can't promise you. It's very challenging to maintain that status. Every summer between June and September, we are constantly making adjustments to our, we're turning on and off our pumps at all hours during the day, from midnight. Sometimes we're turning them on at six in the morning. Sometimes we're turning them on at six, seven at night, depending on how much water we have. We're adjusting the PRV settings throughout the entire summer at all times. I mean, you recall, I bring my laptop home, and I have to go online to our SCADA system, and I'm literally making adjustments in the middle of the night during the summer. And our foreman, Dan Hammond, makes fun of me and tells me I'm playing the piano during the summer, because he's watching, you know, he's charged with helping me and monitoring the flows and pressures. So he's watching. He knows when I turn on and off the pumps and the PRV settings. And it's at, during all hours of the day during the summer. It's a very challenging, it's a game, and GLWA sets the rules. And it's, and right now, it's, it's a high-risk game for us. We don't know how we do until the day after. We don't know what the peak hour, we don't know what the demand is. You know, we're guessing. We're based on experience. We look at the pressures, and we say, oh, there's a lot of demand going on, let's turn on the pump. But we got to turn it off quick because the tanks can drain too much. It's, the whole process is a game. And because we're a max-day customer, we don't have any room for error. It's a very high-risk game. Now, so it brings this joint water proposal. If you read it, the joint water proposal, the onus is on Plymouth Township to make it work. You know, personally, I don't think Canton and Northville have to make any changes at all. Maybe if they do, it's very little. It's us that has to rely more on the storage, bring down our limit even further, which scares the heck out of me, because I know how hard it is right now. It would be nice to have it all automated. I mean, that was the intent when we did the corrective action plan, but there's only so much that can be automated because of the demand, and it's the peak hour that they're focusing on. So there's always going to be some manual aspect to this. And, you know, with just me and Dan Hammond and, you know, a crew that call out, you know, placing more restrictions, more operations, likely capital improvements, and upping the risk, it doesn't appeal to me as an operator. And I do have technical concerns with the proposal. A study would have to be done, if you were serious about even contemplating this. And, you know, my preference, of course, would be to use our engineer that we've been using for the past ten years, that know our system, that helped us with the water study with Salem Township. They helped us with the reliability study. They prepared a model for us. They, they know our system, and this study is really focused on Plymouth Township, if we do go through with it. But I understand, you know, that they don't want to use HRC, and obviously, I don't have that working relationship. I have nothing against OHM. They're a very good engineering company. It's just, I know HRC knows our system better than anyone, because I've worked with them for the past ten years, and it's the same two guys I've been working with. So I prefer HRC, but that's nothing to say bad anything about OHM, because they're a very good engineering firm. I just haven't worked with them personally. That's why I always choose-
Does HRC already have the model, and they're satisfied with it, of the Plymouth Township system?
They do have the water model. It hasn't been updated in a few years, but they used it on a couple of occasions. They helped us with, when they did the study with the corrective action plan back in 2010. They did it again when we were looking at, I think, it's probably the Salem Township ordeal. And we were required to update it during the reliability study, about five, ten years ago.
I haven't heard a whole lot of reasons why we should move forward with this. Have you guys?
Well, that's why we're talking about it. So, because it's been proposed, they've been, they've been talking about this for two years or three years, Northville Township and Canton Township. And people have been asking, well, why isn't Plymouth Township going to be in it if it's going to lower water rates? But it isn't as straightforward.
No.
It would be helpful if Patrick or somebody put down on a one-pager and delineate the stuff you're talking about, so that we have something that we can refer to.
Well, we have three written proposals now. We have one from Wtua-
No, no, I'm talking about what you've just gone through. For example, do you, it sounds like you anticipate maybe more electricity costs, more labor costs to manage our system.
Well, I mean, we would have to study that, but I think that goes without, I'm just, I'm talking about a current, current frame of reference in what we do every summer. It's, it's very challenging to do what we do right now. And what they're telling us, that it's possible that we can do better. We can lower it more.
So you think you're pretty good, and you've optimized it for Plymouth Township?
I can't imagine lowering the peak hour. I can't, you know, for us, without, yeah, maybe you can put more, more opera-
More hardware install?
You know, it's one thing to say, when you look at the data after the fact, you see room for improvement. But when you're actually trying to play the game in real time, you don't see, okay, here's the demand, let's lower it down here. You don't, you don't know. You're based at all on experience. You're looking at the pressures, and you're assuming, wow, it's a really high-demand day, let's open that pump. And, and they talk about, well, you got to drop the feed from Detroit and use the tanks more. So you're going to be filling and emptying the tanks more during the day.
Our tanks.
Correct, our tanks.
For this regional system.
So, you're already talking an additional operation. You're going to be using the tanks, filling and emptying at least-
So that's more wear and tear and more electricity.
It's more hydraulic stress on the, on the infrastructure. Yeah, this is where I'm getting at. And so it's going to be more operations. It's, you know, chances are, there's going to be some capital improvements. And, and just the whole notion of lowering our limit, you know, as your engineer, I would wish that we had a less-risk game and hired our limit, but that would raise our rates thirty percent. So I understand it. It's a worthwhile endeavor, but it's very challenging every summer to maintain it. And we've been doing it for the past eight years. Hope to do it as we go forward, but there's no guarantee, because it's not an easy task. And again, it's, the onus is on us, if this joint venture is formed, to make it work, because it relies on our system.
So we got a, what sounds like a potentially considerable amount of risk and no guarantee of benefit.
There's a lot of variables. I mean-
Too many variables.
We can do another study, but-
Well, Bob, I think the most important thing that Patrick said is that this is, it's truly a game. When you're setting the rates, it's the oddest pricing methodology I've ever seen. Patrick and I go and we negotiate with GLWA, and they say, what is going to be your usage on the peak hour and the peak day? And we say, and just pretend for argument's sake, it's ten million gallons at the peak hour of the peak day. So we get billed all year long at that level, ten million dollars, ten million gallons per hour. That's what we get billed at. And it's, and it's all based upon the concept that GLWA has to fulfill the highest demand at the highest hour of the highest day, so they bill everybody at that level. It would be an easy thing to say, if we could say, well, they say, well, you tell us what your peak hour, peak day is going to be, and we say, okay, ten million gallons, but they don't tell us the day and they don't tell us the hour. You don't know till after the fact. You don't know until on July 26th at nine o'clock in the morning, you use your most water. So you have no idea.
And now-
About three, four years ago, we had a, remember that? We had that anomaly, like on June, mid-June or something?
That was more, that was the M-14 rebuild.
Right. So it screws you. And so it absolutely is a game, and GLWA controls the rules. I think that was really insightful, what Patrick said. They can change the rules anytime they want.
And they already are changing the rules during our re-opener meeting. Now, they don't look at just their max day and their peak hour compared to ours. Now they want to know what our peak hours are throughout the summer, and they take that point, whether it's on their max day or not, they take that point as a starting point for negotiation to set your new limit. So they're looking at all the days now to set the limit during the negotiation process.
Yeah.
And four years from now, that methodology could be completely different.
It could be.
They could change it.
They're all right, they're, I'm online, they're talking about it.
So we could be basing this entire thing on the rate methodology as of now. Four years from now, the rate methodology changes, potentially, all of this work is worthless.
And the other, and they're changing too, because they're going much more towards a fixed cost. So right now, sixty percent of our cost is fixed, forty percent is based upon usage. You know, so I, like, right now, Northville Township pays a lot more per gallon than we do, which isn't fair, and it doesn't make any sense, but that's the game they've played. That's the rate methodology they've chosen. And right now, we're playing the game very well. Patrick does a great job of managing this system. And I'm just, I'm not-
You feel lucky again?
Yeah, we're going to go over next summer. Thank you, Mark.
Hey, I want to play this game one day.
Well, Northville Township has a higher elevation, so they should be paying some more.
But they don't have the capacity that we do.
Well, they also don't have 100% of their system covered by a storage tank. Ours is 100% covered.
Mostly. I mean-
Except this end here.
We got better controls on the five-mile tank. We have pumps. We don't have that on the other side. It sort of floats on the-
Yeah, the east end in this area where this building is, is not as controlled, the tank.
Correct. It's quasi-controlled, but it's not totally controlled.
So that, we could do a study. It might show that we could save money, but even if it came back and said you can save money, I would make two points. Number one, they're going to change the rules on us. And number two, they're going to raise the rates anyhow, because they got to fill that hole someplace. So to me, this is a very short-term solution, and I'm not sure it's going to be worth it in the long term. That's my opinion.
It's the same, it's the same argument, not argument, it's the same discussion I have with people who want to have dual meters at their homes. And I have an, I have an extensive, if you ask me, why can't we have two meters? I'm going to send you this email that I have, and it's an extensive email. And at the, what I, what I say at the end is, the house always wins. The DWS, the Great Lakes Water Authority is going to get their money one way or the other, because they've got to keep that system alive. The infrastructure, the personnel costs, the debt that they have to carry is phenomenal, billions of dollars. So they're just not going to say, oh, well, we lost some money this year in Western Wayne County. They're going to, they're going to get it back. Maybe not right away, but they'll get it back.
So do you want to postpone this? And I guess the other question is, if it turns out that in the future, we may want to join or whatever, and it'll benefit the other two townships, could we join?
Sure. Now, I think for the short term, I cannot stop Wtua from doing this study with OHM. Wtua's a three-member board. It's me, Bob Nix, and Pat Williams. So if we, if it ever came to a vote, I would, I'd probably lose that vote. But I guess if Wtua wants to go ahead with the study and have OHM do it, I can't stop them from doing that. But bear in mind that that's not committing us to this, and I'm sure HRC is going to-
It will, however, commit my time and effort to work with OHM. And I don't have another engineer or anything. It's going to be me.
Well, why would Wtua want to do a study without some type of commitment from Plymouth Township?
We won't be doing the study unless Plymouth Township approves moving forward.
Yeah, it wouldn't make sense.
So can we just defer this for a year, or what?
Postpone.
Sure.
I don't think we need a motion for that. I think we just got, we're just providing the direction to Patrick as our tech, because you are our technical rep to Wtua. Mark is our financial rep to Wtua, and I'm the policy rep. So I guess that's what we'll do.
Patrick, I have a couple of comments that I'd like you to look into. I've noticed, when I was doing a lot of door-to-door campaigning this past summer and fall, there are many homes that are way overwatering because they don't have apparently good controls. I mean, there's huge puddles and mud holes, and it's many houses. And most of them are in the west end, these large subdivisions with large lots. We may need to consider educating these people. Obviously, money's not an object. They don't care, but they're overwatering to the point where they're killing their lawns, because it's creating, the lawn is underwater, and they're watering during heavy rain periods, especially in the fall. We had a lot of rain in the fall, and they were continuing to water during that period. So they're not controlling. So that's maybe some education. And the next one is, how do we confirm that the water, Great Lakes Water Authority, has their generators in working order and are ready to go? Remember, in 2003, they didn't exist, even though we were told for the 1999, what was that thing, when the things turned over, the computer, everybody was panicking?
Y2K.
Y2K, that there were going to be generators installed. They were not installed. It turns out in 2003, during the blackout, the generators were not installed allegedly. And so that's one reason we had no water pressure in most of the township. So what I want to confirm is, are those generators in working order, and do they anticipate they will at least keep a nominal water pressure in the event of a power failure? Enough not to boil, we want to avoid boil, boil water.
Pat knows that answer.
I don't know.
Well, no, but that's part of monitoring and- Well, no, but that's part of monitoring and.
Ironically, the Wayne County representative to the Great Lakes Water Authority Board of Directors is former trustee Abe Mumphah, so you might wanna ask him that question.
Well.
I'm just, I'm not being facetious. I'm just saying, I mean, I don't think Pat knows the answer.
But we're the customer. We need to make sure that our supply is reasonably insured.
Noted, yes.
Because we have, we have our tanks, but once the tanks are depleted, we can't maintain the water pressure, right? If there's no water coming into the tank.
Absolutely, yeah. And we receive our feeds from different GLWA substations, so.
It actually hurts your lawn to overwater it with city water because of the chlorine kills the natural microbes.
Yeah.
And it will actually do more harm than good.
Okay, so there's some training. Maybe we put something in the newsletter or whatever.
We put it in the newsletter. We put it in the e-news every month during the summer. We've done everything short of, you know, a direct mail postcard to everybody, so.
Constant reminders. They always will complain that the water rates are too high.
How about a robo-call?
Yeah, there you go.
Robo-call.
It's a diabolical idea. All right, Patrick, thank you very much. Thank you, Erin. I told you I'd get you out first, but I didn't say what time, so. Thanks, guys. All right, item two is the Phoenix Mill rezoning, Laura Haw. I promised Laura I'd get her out early too, so I'm not doing well tonight.
Thanks, good evening trustees. Many of us are familiar with this project, so I will keep it brief. The application is for a rezoning, which has to do with the sale and redevelopment of Phoenix Mill, which is a Wayne County property. The property is located at 14973 Northville Road. It's approximately five acres. It's located between Edwards Heinz Drive, Northville Road and M-14. I think there's a good site map in your packet that shows that triangular five-acre parcel. So Wayne County is looking to sell these five acres for redevelopment, but presently, the parcel is zoned public lands, which is really limited in terms of the uses that are allowed on the site. Under public land zoning, no commercial uses would be permitted. And it's zoned public lands since it was originally a Henry Ford property, but then it reverted to Wayne County Parks Division. And since 2007, it's been a vacant site, although still in county hands and largely fenced in, but it does have the historic Albert Kahn industrial facility on the site. So the application for the rezoning, which is a text amendment to the township zoning map, is from public lands to a commercial district, the C2 General Commercial District. And this is necessary for any commercial redevelopment of the site. In many ways, the rezoning serves the public interest in Plymouth Township. It will allow for increased access to the site, the removal of some of the fencing. It will allow for the continuation and expansion of the recreation parking for Heinz Park. It will rehabilitate a historic building and turn that into a usable facility. And it will have environmental benefits as there will likely be some site cleanup and there's gonna be an overall reduction to the amount of impervious surface on the site. On November 14th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the rezoning, where several positive comments were made, including trustee Jack Dempsey, who cannot be here this evening, but spoke highly of the project and its ability to create and maintain jobs for the community and enhance the environmental and historic quality of the site. So on page four of this memo in your packet is a model resolution that was recommended by the Planning Commission. And then the resolution is included immediately on the following page in your packet. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Rick Cox from Critical Mass is in attendance and is also available to answer any questions that you might have. He's given some extensive presentations to the Planning Commission, which I know some of you have seen before and are on video. But I'm sure he's happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bob, you're our delegate to the Planning Commission. You're okay with all this and you've been through.
Yeah, it's a great project.
You've seen all the proposals.
Wonderful project.
Yeah. I don't have any questions. Anybody else on the board?
I just have a couple of that are, is there anything being considered that's bicycle-related? Because it's on the bike trail.
Correct. And for the rezoning, it's just allowing the redevelopment of the site, but the applicant will need to come forth with a site plan for the redevelopment. And I know that that's been stated, that's an interest of the developer of Critical Mass and something that we will definitely respect as part of the Heinz Metro Park.
The timing on page 11, I think it's a typo, but it says 289 days, page 11, section seven, and completion by, I think you mean, must mean 2019. It says 2018 here.
That date was when Wayne County was originally soliciting the proposals and was their intended timeline. There was some significant delays with Wayne County in approving and reviewing and approving the proposals. So that was the original timeline. It's modified. They're still in their due diligence period right now, but they do have an aggressive schedule overall to see this project through.
So publishing, you've published for a public hearing already or not required?
We did have the public hearing at the Planning Commission in November, yep.
All right, now we have to publish again after this meeting?
You publish within 15 days. There's the model notice for publication included in your packet, notice of adoption.
All right, if you're ready for a motion?
Any questions from the audience?
I'd like to make a point of law if I could.
Yes, sir.
Rezoning amendments require not a majority of a quorum, but a majority of the board. So it will take four votes for this to pass. It will not take three, which would be a majority of a quorum tonight.
Good, good to know. Hearing no other questions from the board or the audience, I'm looking for a motion.
All right. I move to adopt Resolution 2018-11-27-85, authorizing a text amendment to the Plymouth Township zoning map from PL Public Lands to C2 General Commercial. Planning Commission application number 2310-1018.
A motion has been made by trustee Kermy and I assume that motion is proper for both Ms. Haw and the attorney in terms of its layout. Okay, so the motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dorchevitz. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Looks like we have a supermajority for that one. Okay, next up is item F3, Preliminary Engineering Request for the Litchfield Special Assessment District. Patrick, you're up again.
Good evening. With me tonight is George Sakoff from OHM Advisors. They're the township consultant for roads. This is a proposed special assessment district for Litchfield Drive or the Plymouth Notch subdivision. It's what it's called and it includes Litchfield Drive and Litchfield Court. We are following the longstanding process for establishing special assessment districts, the summary procedure that should be included in your packet. This is really the first step in establishing a proposed special assessment district. There was an initial petition drive. The petitions have been received. They indicate adequate support to proceed at this point in time, which tonight, the board has asked to authorize OHM Advisors to conduct the preliminary engineering phase of the project. This phase will primarily result in a cost estimate for the project, which all the residents would like to know and consider before deciding whether or not the district should be formed and the process goes forward. So this is the step where the preliminary engineering is conducted and the cost estimates are generated based on actual field engineering work. And George is here to answer any questions, if you have anything to ask.
Sure, I have a question. We do have some rough preliminary estimates on what each homeowner would be assessed. What's the range of those numbers right now?
The range was, I believe, in the 25,000 to 28,000.
Twenty-five to 28,000, so.
Conceptual, the more conceptual.
Per lot.
That's an absolute record.
Yeah.
So keep in mind, it's a full reconstruction of the entire cross-section, not a rehab.
If you go down Litchfield, you'll understand why.
But it's been like that since it was born.
Yeah.
And there's really no other way to address that road. It needs to be fully reconstructed.
Are we planning any subsidy from the county allocation?
We're considering that, but I don't want to.
Distort it.
Guarantee it at this time, yeah. We have been allocated $389,000 by Wayne County for the local road improvement program for 2018, 2019, as long as that project occurs at some point during that timeframe. I've notified the county that we are interested in using that money, but we also have another potential SAD out of Rolling Oaks that may occur in 2019. But ultimately, it is, I believe it is up to the board to decide where that $389 is going to go. And we're not gonna have that discussion tonight, but that, yeah, that money's out there. But this, these assessments do not reflect any kind of subsidy.
Are the homeowners who are behind the petition drive, are those, are any of those folks here tonight?
Is there anybody here from Litchfield?
Cindy.
Cindy, but she's in the back. Yeah, she's one of the homes. So the green, so Patrick, the homes in green are the people who signed, are in the A column?
In support, correct.
Yeah.
I'm really, I'm just very, it's unfortunate that you only, they only have 50 percent plus one.
Correct.
There's a lot of homes on here that are not gonna be happy with.
But this has been.
But it's not a commitment yet.
It's not a commitment yet until, frankly, until George and his team finish the final assessments because we have to prepare an assessment roll for these homes. But I will tell you that the Litchfield or the subdivision here, obviously, it's very small. It's pretty close-knit. We've had several meetings with them. I've met with them. Patrick's met with them several times. I've met with them at least three times over the last two years. So they are all highly aware of what's at stake and what's it gonna cost. And the fact that you've got some of them voting no on this, they know the cost and they're either willing to accept the road the way it looks or that maybe they're looking to move on. I don't know, but they're, it is very tight right now in this neighborhood and.
You mean tight in fifty-fifty?
Tight, meaning the vote, yeah, the vote, the vote. This is like the Electoral College map here. I mean, it's, it's a close one. And I think it's my understanding, Pat, that people could still withdraw their vote if they wanted to. They can change their vote. So some of the ones in white could go green.
Correct.
Potentially.
But if one green goes white, then it's off, the deal's off.
But there's still at least two other points where people can take their name off or add to.
Exactly.
Yes.
So it ain't over till it's over, but remember, the $7,000, if it's over, is absorbed by Plymouth Township.
Say that again?
We absorb the engineer, the preliminary engineering fee is absorbed by us if this does not go forward. If it goes forward, then Plymouth Township will amortize that $7,000 into the total cost of the project.
Yeah.
They rejected something like this over 10 years ago and at that time, it was 15.
It was a lot sooner.
15,000 to 20,000.
I think it was a lot closer.
It was recent.
More recent than 10 years ago, yeah. I think it was about three or four years.
Initiative funding, it was like three or four years ago when we had that initial county initiative funding.
This could be the third time around then, could be.
More funding was available back then.
Well, people are feeling richer now than 10 years ago, right? The economy's better, the house is worth more. Maybe it'll be worth even more if they pave the road. I don't know if that is a detractor from the selling price. It is.
It sure is. Okay, so Patrick, what's the ask tonight?
The proposed motion should suffice. It's to authorize OHM to complete the preliminary engineering.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Questions from the audience? All right, anybody wanna make that motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Clerk.
I move to authorize the engineering firm, OHM Advisors, to prepare plans showing the improvements, location and estimates of cost for the paving of Plymouth Notch subdivision as submitted and described on the received petitions for a cost not to exceed $7,000.
Motion has been made by clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer trustee Dorchevitz. I give you a promotion, two of them.
That's a promotion?
You may not want it.
Do you hear that?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you, guys. Okay, next up is item F4. This is a request to enter into contract negotiations with ADM Ventures LLC for the management of Hilltop Golf Course. I'm requesting that the board form a subcommittee comprised of myself, treasurer Clinton and trustee Dorchevitz, assisted by township attorney Kevin Bennett, to begin contract negotiations with ADM. Final contract would still have to come before the board. And Bob, if you want to advance our screen so people can see that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The goal would be to have a contract submitted for board consideration honor before January 11th, which is a Friday. We meet on Tuesday, January 8th, so that would certainly be our target date.
So you want the 8th to be the date instead of the 11th?
It doesn't really matter. I mean, I was just looking for an end-of-the-week date and that, the closest one was January 11th. We can make it January 8th if you want.
Yeah, I think if we're going to negotiate with them.
Okay.
We should have it started on January 9th.
Okay.
If they're the ones.
Yeah. Any questions from the board or from the public? I'll make the motion on this one. I move that a subcommittee of the Board of Trustees and the Township Attorney enter into contract negotiations with ADM Ventures LLC for the management of Hilltop Golf Course and to prepare a management contract to be considered by the Board of Trustees no later than Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by clerk Vorba. Oh, okay. Any?
I have a couple of comments. I sent you the, I sent all of us the email on this last week. Just note that it's pretty general stuff saying, make sure you try to make as much, they seem willing to take on as much of the control as possible. That's better versus having somebody just send you invoices if they have a cost control incentive for repairs or modifications. Plus, Yankee ingenuity always helps versus just sending somebody the bill. The other item is, you may wanna review their presentation where they did say that they were willing to fully cooperate and would not be intimidated at all by moving to a nine-hole course. So it's something they're willing to listen to.
Yeah, in fact, that is consistent with, it's similar to what they're already doing in South Lyon and I didn't see them flinch at all from that, from that proposed idea. And I think we could put something in the contract to that effect. The other thing I would like to see too, and this was Jerry's idea, I'll give you credit for it, is talking to them about down the road, if they would take on the maintenance of Township Park.
Yeah. So those are great, they already have some experience doing something a little similar.
Yeah, very similar, actually.
So if the relationship grows, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so we have a live. Okay, so we have a live motion on the table, so Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item F5 is a contract for towing services. Lieutenant Kudra, you're going to have to come up to the podium here. So Dan, I mean Lieutenant Kudra, we want to know the question, are you going to shave the beard off after Friday, or what?
My wife would love me to. My position is, I've already paid my money, so I'm going to roll with this as long as I can.
Okay.
Shaving it off will turn your odometer back, you'll look much younger.
Oh, well, I'll let her know you think so.
Okay, you're up.
So we put out on the township website a request for proposals for towing services for the township. That went up on the 28th of September. We asked for sealed bids to be turned into the clerk's office. Those were due at 2:00 PM on the 1st of November. We did receive three bids. The bidding companies were Westland Car Care, Mayflower Towing, and Chandler Car Carriers. I've included a spreadsheet, if we can get that up on the board, so the.
Do we have that spreadsheet? It has the green lines?
Yeah. So what I put together here is a spreadsheet, just kind of hitting the main points that were bid upon. Primarily what we're looking for with this contract, it's not really costing the township any money. We're looking for the prices that the towing companies would charge folks that we call the tow truck for, whether that be for an accident scene, the scene of one of our impounds, or if we find a stranded motorist on the side of the road with a, you know, an empty gas tank, or if they have a flat tire, or what have you. And primarily what we're concerned with is we feel like we have a responsibility to provide the best value for our citizens that we're calling the tow truck for. So items that are highlighted in green for the various different fee categories, that was the lowest bid. The companies that had the most amount of lowest bids were Westland Car Care and Mayflower Towing. Westland Car Care had four of the lowest bids, but really, the main ones that would be used the most are the basic towing and/or impound fee, which Mayflower Towing had the lowest on. Also, the storage fees, Mayflower was the lowest by far for the storage fees. And then, of course, the fuel and the lockouts. Westland Car Care was a little bit lower on those, but we don't use those quite often as we do the towing and storage fees. There was a requirement that the vendors carry workers' comp insurance. I did have some contact with Chandler Car Carriers, because they didn't provide any insurance information in their quote. They said that they did not have workers' comp insurance, but I believe they said they might get it, or something about it was a family business and they had all family members working for them. So that's why that's highlighted in red. We did have on there that you would procure it, and they didn't have it at the time that I had called them. So other than that, that, it's pretty self-explanatory up there. We've used Mayflower since 2003, so we've had them for the last 15 years. We are very satisfied with their response time. They generally have a sufficient amount of equipment out on the roads to handle whatever our needs might be, and if they do not have the equipment, like a heavy wrecker or something along those lines, they subcontract out and get that.
To your knowledge, when was the last time this contract was bid out?
I believe it was 2003.
Okay.
At that time, there was another company, and I can't remember, in addition to Mayflower. Does anybody remember?
It's probably Gardner Towing.
That's it?
Yeah, and I actually called Gardner.
What became of them?
They're still in Plymouth, and I actually called them. I called several tow companies, and just to give them a heads-up, hey, this is on our website, and if you want to bid for it. I called Gardner, and I spoke to the owner, and he never submitted a bid, so.
Give us the little history of why you do this versus nothing. If you did nothing, what's the, if you didn't have a contract?
Well, you know, we, the last time we had a contract was in 2003, and we've been operating really without a contract in place for several years now. I think the contract just allows us to lock in these prices for our citizens when we do call a tow truck for them. I think it's important to do that, because, not that we've had any issues with Mayflower raising their prices, they've, in fact, a lot of these prices are the same as they were from the 2003 contract, so. But I think it's good to have it down on paper and to lock them into their prices, so they can't raise them on us.
Yeah, and I think it's similar to why we'd like a contract if we continue to have semi-privatized ambulance service, why it's good to have a contract with that provider. And it's just good to have a contract. I think it's important to update it. It's been a long time since we had any type of arrangement with any towing company. And even though there has been no whiff whatsoever of anything mischievous happening here in the township, it's no secret that towing contracts in Wayne County, in Detroit, and some of the other, some of our other neighboring communities have been the focus of criminal investigations and corruption. And so I think it's important for us, in a spirit of transparency, to bid this out, do it in a fair and open process, and have a fully executed contract that is understood and agreed to by the parties above board. Not that that hasn't been done, but let's button it down while we're here.
Absolutely, I agree. You know, right now, there's, also, Mayflower does a lot of work for us, you know, for the township on our behalf. If one of our patrol cars gets a flat tire, if we need a vehicle towed for purposes of evidence to our police station, all of that happens with no charge to us, but we don't have a contract locking Mayflower in to do that for us. So could they send us a bill for that without a contract? Absolutely, they could. If we have them locked in on this contract, they can't. Not that they would, it hasn't happened in the 15 years that we've been using them.
Now, your request is not to have a contract agreed to tonight. So what we're doing is basically awarding the bid to Mayflower, and then a contract will be drafted by Mayflower and our attorney, and then that contract will come back to us for later approval, similar to what we're just doing, what we just did with the golf course.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
The contract, we have a draft form without any names on it, and that's been forwarded to the chief. And if Mayflower is selected by the board as the contractor, then we would get that over to the township attorney, and that would be for him and the owner of Mayflower to work out.
Right. Okay, any questions by the board?
All right, so in the contract for township-owned vehicles, are you going to say they will be no charge, or are you going to be silent?
I believe the rough draft that I put together, which I apologize, I don't have in front of me, I do have language in there that any services provided for township-owned vehicles will be at no charge, which is what has been happening thus far.
That includes ambulances and fire trucks and things like that?
I can't answer that. I know our police department vehicles, we don't get any charges for.
Who, yeah. I can hear you.
The, in the past, they were not able to tow our fire trucks and ambulances. If there's somebody here from the company, we could ask if they have that ability now. Because large vehicles, we've had to go to another towing company in the past.
From downtown, typically.
Typically, yes.
I believe Mayflower does contract that out. They do not have a heavy wrecker.
I guess it wouldn't be fair if, you have to need to think about it, if they have to contract that we would seek it to be free to Plymouth Township. But for an ambulance, my judgment is, they probably can tow an F-450 or 550 ambulance.
They may be able to. We have not had to tow the F-550s since we've owned them. We have had to tow the Internationals, which are larger frame vehicles. Those are considered medium-duty. That's like an F-650 or an F-750 in comparison.
Was towed by Mayflower equipment or contract?
I believe that was contracted out with a different company, and this is sad that I know this, but that cost us about $500 to tow that vehicle.
Well, we've towed our fire engines a lot too, right?
Yes, we have.
Oh, okay.
Well, anyway, it might be worth talking about in the contract negotiation to see what's.
That could all probably be worked out during contract negotiations.
That could be added to the discussion.
One other question is, if I want XYZ Company to tow my vehicle, I can do that as a person that's in an accident or whatever?
That is correct, yes. So far, as, so long as your vehicle is not creating a traffic hazard, because a lot of times, folks will call their own tow company, and they'll get a time estimate of an hour. And if I have a vehicle in the intersection of Ann Arbor Road and Haggerty, we're not going to wait an hour. We'll impound that vehicle. But if it's not creating a traffic hazard, absolutely, people are allowed to work out a private tow.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? The man in the back, just stand up and.
Come on up here, so we can hear you. No, come right up to the microphone.
Get the microphone.
Then you'll be recorded.
Use the microphone, please.
Bob Keswell from Westland Car Care Towing. And I was, in proposal, I made one for each member of the trustees, and you guys should have all gotten one of these. In it, it does ask if you have the capabilities of towing fire trucks, ambulances, and stuff like that, which we are equipped to do. And that is all in the proposal, that no charge to the city, whether it's a fire truck, ambulance, a police car, which we do with our other contracts that we have right now. I do think, I don't know if you guys all have these or not, but.
No, we don't.
We don't have it.
And we're not going to start reviewing bids tonight, and you have less than two minutes, three minutes.
I just wanted to let know it wasn't a proposal.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back.
My name's Bill Chandler, I own Chandler Car Carriers, and presently, I'm doing all the contract work for Mayflower Towing, towing the fire trucks, the ambulances, the city dump trucks, everything, and have been for several years. I just wanted you to know a little bit about me. I've been towing since 1977. I got all the equipment you need here in Plymouth to handle that, and I have two storage lots right on Ann Arbor Road here. And if you have any questions at all for me.
What do you mean, you do the towing?
So he's a subcontractor?
Subcontract. He calls me when the fire trucks break down, the ambulances, the city dump trucks. I've been doing all that for years.
Okay, we appreciate that, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks.
Anyone else from the audience? All righty, then, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor? Clerk? I move to approve resolution 2018-11-29-86, awarding a three-year contract for towing services to Mayflower Towing, subject to the review by the Township Attorney and final approval by the Township Board at a later date.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Treasurer Clinton.
I have a question. We directed the lieutenant to negotiate a contract, right? You're going to negotiate and then bring it forward?
That's right.
Yeah. Subject to re, the attorney will be assisting him.
This says we're awarding it. I thought we said we weren't awarding it tonight. Maybe I didn't listen properly.
Well, we're awarding the bid, but it's still subject to contract approval.
Yeah, maybe it should have been selecting a bidder, would have been better terminology to use.
Because, for example, if you had some roadblock and you couldn't come forward with a contract, we'd go to somebody else. Or you'd come back and say, hey, we couldn't make an agreement. You gotta, whatever works, okay, just so we don't have to come back, or we don't have, remember, this is sensitive to competitors.
Right.
So we don't want some, somebody's attorney coming and saying we did something wrong. I'm not smart enough to know what the right answer is.
Mr. Supervisor, our plan is to work with the attorney to draft a contract, and the contract will be brought back to the board before.
So do you want to say that in the motion, or you guys tell me?
Well, I just said it, but that's what our plan is.
The motion uses the word "awarding."
Yeah, but then it says "subject to review by the Township Attorney and final approval by the Township Board." I feel comfortable with that language.
Right, good. Go for it.
So motion has been made and seconded. Take the roll, please.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And next is supervisor and trustee comments. So we are going to meet again on Tuesday, December 11th. That will be mostly budget-related issues and approval of the 2019 budget. We've got some other budget adjustments from the 2018 budget as well. Then we are going to have, our next scheduled meeting for December is Christmas Day, I don't think we want to meet that day. So we are going to do a special meeting on Monday, December 17th. Nothing dramatic that night, it's just that we have more work to do, and the alternative would be to have a very long December 11th meeting, which I don't think anybody wants to have. So we will be meeting on December 11th and Monday, December 17th.
Why'd you decide Monday?
We had too many, we had several of the trustees who could not make the Tuesday night meeting, so we just bumped it up by a day, and we got everybody locked in so far. That's really all I have. Bob, anything? Jerry?
Nothing.
Mark?
Just quickly, tax bills are being printed, they'll be mailed out, should hit mailboxes on Saturday, and they do include the 1.2 millage increase that was approved by voters during the November ballot.
Do they include the head liover ride from Schoolcraft College?
That's not billed until the summer tax bill.
All right.
Chuck?
All right.
You all set, Mike?
Yes. Somebody handed out a cheat sheet two for budget. Is this a supplement to cheat sheet one?
Yes, because there's amendments.
So cheat sheet one is still good, and this is, cheat sheet two is additive?
No, there's changes in cheat sheet two over one.
So two supersedes one?
Correct.
All right, now I understand.
It's hard to say cheat sheet.
Yeah, that's probably not a good word to use, cheat, in budgets and finance. Anyway, Jerry, this is for you. The 2019 schedule of meetings that I assume you prepare and we approve, we need to probably get some input. I'd like to not have a meeting as late in December as we're doing this year. We may want to think about that, if we can avoid that. In other words, the third week in December is probably not a good time for, if we can avoid it.
Right.
And then second is during the period of the Michigan Township Association annual meeting, which I think is, we need to confirm it, it's April 1, between April 4. I don't think it's a conflict, but it's something that some of us would like to go to and could learn something.
Where's it at this year, do you know?
Grand Rapids, all right. And let's think, around 4th of July, we may need to think of what we want to do there. In the past, they were done somewhat willy-nilly, and then it created confusion. If we could plan ahead, it would be a good idea to avoid funny meeting dates that are conflicts, or that'll be obvious conflicts.
We could pass out what's already being looked at to the board in the map comments.
We don't plan on voting that in, though, until January, right?
Oh, we're going to wait till January. Usually, it used to be done in October or something. All right, good. Plenty of time.
Okay, that's it. Any questions or comments from the audience at this point? Excellent. Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.